Good evening and welcome to the June 27, 2018 North Idaho College Board of Trustees meeting. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And trustee Banducci, would you read the mission statement tonight?
Yes, ma'am. The mission statement for North Idaho College is as follows. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. And we do have a quorum tonight, all trustees present, and it doesn't look like we have anyone signed up for public comment. Shannon's checking. No? So, review of the minutes. Board, you've had a chance to look at the minutes. Any changes? Not, we'll adopt the minutes as written. And the first thing on the agenda would be our celebrating a success, so I would like to introduce Teresa. Teresa, can you help us with your last name?
I can. It's Teresa Borrenpoel.
Oh, that's really pretty. Welcome.
And he's a great guy, worth the trouble, so. But Teresa, I work as an enrollment coordinator here at North Idaho College, which means I help students through the recruitment process and then into the admissions pipeline. And I'm going to tell you about a program that we ran this year that we are very, very proud of. It's called NIC Connect, and the goal of this program is to connect our high schools with the admissions process, and I'm going to show you how we did that. So, NIC Connect is five purposeful visits in all Region 1 high schools where we've identified the pinch points in the enrollment process, so places where students fall out of the enrollment pipeline because they're missing some documentation, or maybe their assessment scores aren't high enough. So, we developed this program in order to guide them through the entire process with us being present in their high schools where they are. The five things that are listed here, and I'll go into them in detail in just a second. The first time that we visited, we did the application. The second time we visited was an enrollment overview, so students knew what would be expected of them throughout the enrollment process. The third visit was scholarships and financial aid. The fourth visit was taking the NIC assessments on their high school campuses. And the last one was actually bringing our advisors to their high schools to sign up for classes. So, I'd love to talk about why we decided to do this. Number one, every year, we have had a massive bubble of students who want to sign up for classes in maybe the last 10 days before school starts. Last year, we had about 800 students that were eligible to register for classes, and about 450 of those students signed up in the 10 days leading up to the school year. That doesn't do any service for them or for us because we're rushing students through, our class options are limited, and so we wanted to see if we could front-load that. How many students could we get registered for classes before the 10 days before the start of the semester? Next, it would create an academic offering shortfall, so because it's 10 days before school starting, the classes that don't have a lot of students in them have been eliminated from the schedule, and so there's less classes for students to sign up for. And then finally, summer melt, which is the phenomenon of students saying, yes, I'm going to college when they leave high school, but then somehow they don't show up on our campus. We wanted to see if we could ease that a little bit. So, that's why we did the NIC Connect program. The guiding principles of the program were that we wanted to meet students where they were, both physically and in the admissions process. So, they're in their high schools, they're a captive audience, we're there during the school day, so that's meeting them where they are as a captive audience. We also, every time we went, wherever they were in the process, even if it wasn't the intended purpose that day, we would still help them get up to speed. And then finally, we wanted to build those relationships with the high schoolers so that they start turning from their high school counselors to our NIC staff, and they have those trusted relationships, so they know that they have somebody that they can call on the NIC campus. Visit one was our college application week. We do this as a statewide opportunity, so they didn't necessarily have to sign up for North Idaho College, but we were present in their schools, ready to help them if they were wanting to. We created an exciting atmosphere so that they knew that it was a big deal to go on to college and that we were going to be along for the journey. This first graph shows you the percentage of students at each high school in Region 1 who signed up, or who applied to North Idaho College. So, at some schools, we were as high as 100%. Every single student in the class signed, or applied to North Idaho College. In some schools, we were as low as 25%. So, this obviously has a little bit of variability because if it's a very small school like Mullen, that's different than a very large school like Post Falls, but this just kind of gives you an idea of what those applications look like. Visit two, we went to talk to students about a series of things. We wanted to let them know what their high school, their senior year was going to look like as it pertained to applying to college, NIC specifically, that we were going to need their transcripts, their assessments, that we were going to help them along the way with financial aid, what course registration looked like. And we actually told them, based upon their SAT scores, what math and English they placed into. And this is a really big deal because they, at this point, this was a December visit, still had six months before they graduated high school, so they could still do something about a math or an English placement. And so, that was really important to empower them about where they were in the process. The other thing is that we checked in with them about the major that they were applying for, because maybe they didn't quite know what they wanted to do, or, you know, we showed them a list of classes they'd be taking as an engineer, let's say, and they would say, oh, my gosh, I'm not that great at math. And we'd say, okay, well, that's okay. There's other things that you can do on campus that have engineering components that you don't have to go all the way through 300 level calculus. So, it was a great time for us to have that conversation with them. There's no data from this visit because this was an informative visit. This was to empower students to let them know what the process was going to look like so that we could help them through it. These were documents that we gave them. They were able to receive their program requirements as well as talking through the gems, so they could start dreaming about what their electives were going to be. And then we showed them very hairy documents like this so that they knew where their math placement was and how many math classes they were needing. When I talk to students, I always say, there's two things that keep students out of college, and that's math and money. Can they pay from school and can they pass their math classes? By the time we left this visit, we would say, as your math score stands right now, you have X amount of classes for math that you'll have to take. And when students hear, oh, there's only two math classes I have to take, that really gives them a lot of confidence, so. And they also knew that they could change that if they wanted to based upon their involvement. Visit three was scholarships and financial aid. One thing that you should know is that we didn't walk any students through the financial aid application. We wanted this to be an experience that they had with their parents. Their parents need to be very much involved with that, and because we were there during the day, we did a financial aid check-in, so we would tell them at what point in the process they were, if they needed a verification form, we would print it off right there and hand it to them. So, we were very much a conduit, but we did not fill out the financial aid application with them. The financial aid team does a fantastic job getting into our communities in the evenings and doing workshops with parents, so they had that covered. But we did go through the scholarship application with them, so they were able to be qualified for our almost $1 million scholarships from NIC. You can see for visit four that we did assessments. So, something that you should know about our math and English requirements are that for math, if you don't have a 510 or higher on your SAT, we require that students take an additional assessment to be placed. For English, you can actually have a 370 or higher to get a placement. That matters because a lot more students are going to be flagged for math because the threshold is higher than students being flagged for English. And so, students weren't told that they had to take an English test, but if a student placed into English 099, which is remedial English, but they've had a year of senior English since they took those SATs, they may have improved their abilities. So, even though they're not being told that they have to take that English assessment, when we went into the schools, we said, hey, we can actually improve your placement if you take this, or you can improve your placement if you take this assessment and score higher. A couple of things you should know about the math placement is that it has to be proctored, so it's a very, it's very much a formal setting, and every time we give that assessment, it costs NIC $15 for a student to take that test up to five times. The English placement can be done from anywhere, but if they hadn't taken it or they could improve their standing when they came to the math assessment, we had them take it right there. We didn't want them to walk out the door without taking that assessment. Some pretty cool data here. Oh, yeah.
The math assessment, that's done in large group formats, so that you're only paying one $15 proctor at that time?
No, so I proctored the assessment, but every time a student sets up an account, it charges NIC that $15. So, some data here. So, we gave that math assessment 325 times in the northern region, and if we were closer, you could see that really large group right there are students who assessed into remedial math. And while that might not feel good to know that some of our students aren't placing into college-level math, students are not able to sign up for their classes until they have a math and English placement. So, that's 196 students that before weren't able to sign up for classes because they didn't have a math placement, but now they can. So, even though they're placing into remedial math, we now get to welcome them as students onto our campus, and they can sign up for classes. Another thing that you should know about those math scores is this is the distribution of Alex Assessment Scores. In order to place into college-level math, it takes a 30 on the assessment, and I'll see if you can see, right here is where the 30 is. So, you can see that our students are placing well into remedial math, and while, once again, that's not the best news, it's great news to know upfront. So, now we know that we need to open more spots for our math 090 course, and we understand what we're expecting from those students coming in. So, with the English assessment, this is kind of a fun one. So, every other, so this one here, this one here, and this one here are all students that had a prior placement and then placed into a higher course. So, maybe they placed into 099, and then they went into English 101, so they went from remedial to college level. All the others that I didn't point to, the 17, 20, and 22, were all students who didn't have placements before, who now have placements, who can now sign up for classes. This right here is one of my favorite charts from this entire project. Because of students taking that English assessment and placing from one class into another, we saved Region 1 students $28,000 worth of credits that they no longer needed to take because they placed in a higher-level English class. So, they no longer needed that English 099 because they'd taken their high school senior class, and now we're able to place into maybe 101P or 101. So, huge savings for our students. Another chart that I love showing people is, based upon the assessment visit alone, we saved students 97 hours' worth of driving to NIC to come take these assessments. And this drive time was calculated from their closest NIC center. So, the Bonners Ferry Center is a block away from the school, so theirs calculation was, you know, not even a quarter of a mile. But for the students coming up from St. Mary's, that's a really long drive in the middle of the winter for our students, and for us to go down and take one person versus them sending all 25 of their applicants up, and then also, that's time that they had out of the classroom. So, we save them time, we save them money, we save them gas. Next up was our last visit, which was Visit Five, Advising and Registration. So, one cool thing that we did was, we knew the students that would be in the rooms at these visits, and so we preloaded all of their schedules. The advisors did a tremendous job going into the students' accounts and putting them in the math class that they had tested into, putting them into the English class that they had assessed into, and then based upon whatever degree they were going towards, we made some calculated decisions. If they were going into, you know, a business program, we put them in a business 101-type or an economics class because we knew that those were necessary. So, when we go into the room, the students already have all the classes that they need flagged, and now all they need to do is sign up for the times. We preregistered all students for 15 credits because we have the 15-to-finish program, where if students sign up for 15 credits, the next semester, if they pass all of those with a C or better, they get three free credits. So, it gave us an opportunity to brag about that to the students in Region 1, but also kind of assist them in getting that course load. We also talked about what it meant to be in 15 credits, so, you know, we stressed that it's not a good deal to save that three credits' worth if that's going to make you fail your classes. So, we were really honest with them about that as well. We had about a 1 to 5 advisor-to-student ratio in these rooms, so we were able to help them pretty quickly, and we had developed, thanks to Jeff Davis, is he in the room? Sometimes he is, a post-it note strategy where each of us had a post-it note color, and if somebody needed to talk to financial aid, there was a green post-it note on the computer screen so that we could go assist that student and not have, you know, just have a seamless experience with them. But let's talk about the registration data, because this is the fun stuff. So, this is the percent of applicants who have registered by high school. So, that top line there is 70%, the second line down is 60%. So, we had a couple of schools that 60% of the applicants are already registered for classes at NIC. I'm going to tell you about school number nine, though, that tiny one about 3/4 of the way through. There was one school in Region 1 who would not let us in the doors, and that is school number nine. So, if we use school number nine as the yardstick to kind of determine if this program was a success, this certainly tells us that it was. There is higher numbers at all of the other schools of students who had applied and then had gone on to register for classes. So, when I show you the next couple, keep that in mind as well. Yeah, please.
Just curious, I'm guessing that you'll be communicating with school number nine to let them know what this data did?
Yes, definitely. And we've also, when we were thinking about this program, we were in front of the principals, and I know that we'll be in front of them again. And when we contacted school number nine, they were very gracious, but they said, you know, we've actually got everything under control. We don't, we don't need you to make this additional visit, and we made pleas for it, but we didn't have the data yet. So, it'll make it a lot, hopefully, simpler to convince them that this is a good idea. School number two on there is a very, very small school, so their data is very fragile. This is our average credit load by school. So, the third, the third line down is 12 credits, and of course, 12 credits is a full load. So, we're averaging over full-time for the, this cohort, for students that are coming straight from high school into college. There's only two lines up there that are below the 12 mark. One of those is a school that had a group of six students who had taken so many dual credits that they were unable to sign up for more than four credits at the moment. We're working to kind of figure that out with them, but, so that has skewed that data a little bit. And then, school number one is just a fair amount of part-time students as well. So, that is average credit load, and here's the big program results. So, we have 2014 all the way through 2018 here. In 2014 through 2017, the highest number of students that we had that came from the high schools into North Idaho College, from Region 1 high schools, was 281 students. Right now, we have 374 students registered for classes for the fall. I know, it's a 25% increase over last year, which we're really, really proud about. Now, summer melt is still a very real thing. We are still building a relationship with the students. They're still coming, hopefully, to orientation and to Cecil Summer Splash. This is not done, but hopefully, it continues in this way. So, that's the program results. A couple of things with program overviews. The cons are only first up here because of the formatting of the slide. I'm not a pessimist, but we'll talk about those first. First of all, students may miss on-campus engagement. If students aren't coming here to visit with our financial aid office, maybe they're missing an on-campus experience. I had one counselor at the very beginning of the process say, this is too easy. Students need to know that going to college is a process that they're invested in. By the end of the program, I promise you, she was not saying that anymore. She was saying, thank you so much for making this so easy, but still up there possibly in the cons. Too much information may scare students away. That visit number two especially, we're giving them a math flow chart. That's a really big piece of information for them, but we hoped it empowered them. Students did miss class time, but as I showed you with that driving chart, hopefully, they missed less because we were coming to them instead of them coming to us. And there's a lot of administrative work associated with this program on the back end. Certainly was worth it because we're getting students across those barriers and into school, but it does take a lot of work. Pros are that students are more aware of the enrollment process. I had counselors telling me that all the time, and we actually did some exit surveys with the counselors, with the students, and with the staff on campus that helped us with it, and we were hearing these same threads all the way through. Students were really empowered by the process because they knew what they were doing. Students were empowered to understand their academic standing, so students were saying, okay, I'm going to set time aside and practice for math, so that, I always said, you know, give yourself a scholarship, pass a math class before you even get into college. Students who wouldn't otherwise engage with us are a captive audience, especially at our mid-sized schools, the counselors roll out the red carpet for us. Sometimes it's almost like a school assembly with the amount of people they brought down. So, people who wouldn't normally drive to campus and engage with us are now engaging with us because it's part of their school day. We are building stronger relationships between the students and personnel. One of the questions that we had on the exit survey with the students was, do you know somebody at NIC that you can contact if you have questions over the summer? And 80% of them said yes. We also put a little note there so they could type in the name of the person. It was the people that were in their schools the most often, so really, really fun news. And even if students chose not to go to college, they know exactly what it's all about. They took the assessments, and those assessments are good for two years, so they can still jump through those hoops a little bit easier as it goes along. Changes for 2018. Iowa's asked a lot about parent engagement. Wasn't a piece I was able to think a ton about before we started, so I just kind of analyzed this year, and we're going to do a parent engagement next year. We're going to, we have this postcard that says, join the North Idaho College family, and then the text says, we know, it says, your student has applied to North Idaho College. We know you want to support your new Cardinal as they complete their senior year and look forward to the next step. Visit this site to be involved and stay connected and help your student on their path to college. When we go out next year for the application event, we're going to give these to all the students and ask them to write their parents' mailing information on there and give it back to us, and we're going to put a stamp on it and put it in the mail. So, the student's giving us permission to engage their parents, but we're also not, depending on the student, to get the information to their parent. So, we are going to do an NIC Connect guide that kind of has everything in one place. Every time I go, I hand them a new paper, a new paper, a new paper. We want to consolidate that. Financial aid, at more than just the financial aid visit, is really, really important, so we're hoping to work that out as well. Doing some enhanced technology so there's not so much administrative work on the back end, and then just because we are onsite doing this process, we know that there's ways that we can improve when we're in the schools, and we've noted those, and we're working on those now. So, that is the NIC Connect program. Any questions?
That's impressive. It's very impressive. Board, questions, comments?
No, that is.
Trustee Howard.
Obviously, this is geared toward students in the high school other than the students that we invite in through our dual-credit program, but is there an outreach program like yours that will get to the people to get into the dual-credit program?
So, I think that we can build a stronger relationship with the dual-credit program in that when we're already on the campuses giving assessments, dual-credit students need assessments too. We should be doing this all at one time. But to be honest, it actually takes care of dual-credit students and non-dual-credit students alike. It's whoever's in the senior class and who's applying, so it still helps them.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, it's just an incredible program, obviously making a huge difference.
Here's hoping.
Oh, boy. So, great work. Did you want to comment? Go ahead.
So, I know a little bit of this, but I'm going to ask the question.
Sounds good.
Dr. Borrenpoel, how did you come up with this idea? What caused this to happen?
Well, it definitely was a conversation around not giving students the best possible service with all of those students coming through in the 10 days before school started. That's what really got it rolling. And so, I searched on EAB's website and said, what programs have been done in the past to be engaged and interacting with these high school students to help ease that process? So, it was about watching us have room for improvement and finding wheels that have already been created.
And, go ahead.
No, you go ahead first.
Well, and, so, many of you may not know, or you may know, that Teresa also co-chaired our SEM committee this last year in its inaugural version, and we'll be involved in that next year as well. I know that the state has gotten, you've gotten some interest beyond NIC with this. Do you want to just share a little bit about that, with that interest and where that's going?
Sure, absolutely. So, we have been contacted by the state. We let them know what was going on with this program, especially as it pertains to summer melt, and we were asked to present for the state board a couple of weeks ago remotely, and then also, I was just in Boise the last two days at the Idaho Futures Conference, and the big conversation there was, how do we hand students off from the high school counselors to the college experience? How can we make that as seamless as possible? So, I was invited to that to talk a little bit about this program and how we've done it here at North Idaho College. I presented this also at a couple of conferences, and at both conferences, there were admissions representatives attending the piece, and it looks like CWI is eyeing this as a possible piece for their programming, and then also, the College of Technology, Idaho State University is looking at this as a case study to work into their programming as well. So, I'll be back in Boise in October to present to high school counselors to talk about this program, but based upon our numbers, this catching them through the cracks is definitely working.
That's just fantastic. Trustee Dunlap.
Teresa, thank you for all you're doing, and you're doing a great job. When you look at the fact that the majority of our students are non-traditional students that don't come straight from high school, are there any lessons learned from this project that can be applied to those non-traditional students in an effort to recruit more of them?
Absolutely. So, as recruiting is divided up between myself and my colleague, I do traditional populations, and she does, Sarah Schmelzer does non-traditional populations. I do think that there are ways that we can start incorporating this. Maybe it's workshops that do this exact same thing on campus for non-traditional applicants. Maybe there's, you know, a series of NIC Connect dates that we can do on campus that when students come to the admissions office and say, hey, I'd like to apply to NIC, that we can hand them a postcard and say, hey, here's the dates that you can come on campus, and if you ever, you know, find a hiccup, this is where you can come to work through it.
Thank you.
I think that's a fabulous idea. My comment is, I think Rick could help a lot with this, too. In my former life, I was on K-12 school board. So, I'd like to see, and your schedule is packed, but if you could do some presentations to the school boards, at least Coeur d'Alene, Lakeland, Post Falls, get on their agendas, and then, you know, school number nine, when the board sees what's going on, school number nine opens their door. I don't know who they are, it doesn't matter, but I think the board would find it very compelling, and it might, you know, even help you more. And Rick's got some great connections with the, with the district, so.
Wonderful. I'd be happy to. Yeah.
Anyway, very nice. Thank you.
Well, thank you all.
All right. That takes us on to our president's report.
Well, thank you. Speaking of relationships, earlier this week, I had the opportunity, Laura Rumppler and I, visited the new superintendent, Coeur d'Alene School District 271, Steve Cook, with interim superintendent Stan Olson, and it was just a getting-to-know-you meeting. We had some good discussion about some ideas and some things that we can start to work on together. I think he's going to be a great asset to our community, and, you know, we've opened the doors up both ways, and it's just, it's a, we've had a lot of good relationship building this year with School District 271 in particular, and, you know, one of Dr. Olson's tasks in, you know, the work he did this last year was to pave the way to improve that relationship. And together, we've worked and been engaged in a lot of activities, and so, I guess this last meeting was the handoff.
Yeah.
So, I really look forward to that. Most of you know that July 26, 27, we will be hosting the first-ever ICCC President's Retreat, looking at all the really strategic issues around our segment statewide, looking at the issues and strategies, line item, process gubernatorial transitions, legislative transitions, our system-ness within our own segment, other system issues around common course numbering and statewide transfer, horizontal alignment, a bunch of other stuff. But it's a, it's a two-day retreat where we're just going to focus on issues as a community college segment and how we're going to build out those strategies, and importantly, involve the other cabinet-level entities in affinity groups, so student services, instruction, facilities, to work more within the community college segment to address some of those strategic ideas. So, we're looking forward to that. Yesterday, many of us attended a meeting at Panhandle Health, a meeting of community agencies, school districts, superintendents, and the issue was around suicide, suicide prevention, and the response, and really arose out of all the really difficult year that we've had in North Idaho this year. In that, in that meeting, it became clear that the common theme is that we're all thinking about this. A lot of these agency leads, health, medical, school personnel, have been thinking, what can we do? And the common theme throughout it was, we all want to do whatever we can. We've offered the resources of North Idaho College. We've been very involved throughout this last year on the response piece of that. We talked about that a little bit earlier, but, so the culmination or the beginning, I guess, of this conversation is, one other thing is, there's just a lot happening in this space that's unknown, and it's uncoordinated, and there's very little coherence, and so, as a first step, there at least needs, there needs to become more coherence. We will, North Idaho College, be hosting a summit in August. Tim Gerlitz is working on that. It's a leadership summit around this issue of suicide prevention, resources, and response. And so, you'll hear more about that, but, and it's, it's, we're inviting all of Region 1 to be a part of that, and so, it's just a start, but it was encouraging to see the wide community response on this subject, and hopefully, some good will come out of it. Let's see, the, I think the only other thing that I'll talk about today is, you have a handout that should have been at your place, and I won't spend a lot of time with this, but I want to make sure that we- but I want to make sure that we got this before we got too far into summer. We're getting ready to activate our Year Seven review by the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. And what you have is a draft and not fully complete, but mostly complete timeline of how the process will unfold beginning this summer. Didn't want to wait until August for you to see that. You'll, certainly the board will be instrumental in the review and there will be a number of events and sessions along the way over the next year and a half or so that we'll have board engagement.
Great.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McLennan. Board, any comments or questions? Well, I would just like to say that I'm really pleased to see you and NIC take a leadership in the suicide prevention and that you're going to host a summit in August is fantastic. It is really clearly a tragedy and we're seeing it much too often in North Idaho. And if you look at the statistics across the nation, Idaho's pretty high. And so I appreciate your leadership in that.
Well, thank you. And the numbers this year are almost at the full-year numbers last year.
Yeah.
And so it's really, it's a, it's a big problem.
It is. Thank you. All right, trustee Banducci, would you please give us the K-Tech report?
I would be glad to. Just a couple of quick highlights. Their enrollment is in a very positive trend. They ended the spring term with 388 students and they already have 428 applications so far for the fall term. So it's up 40, so that's in excess of 10% already. And they really haven't started to push it yet, you know. Their placement again this year was 99%. That means either people got, the young people got a job going on to further their education or they went into the military. They said they only had one student of the graduating class they couldn't account for in one of those three situations. So, and one of the things they noted, I had given some numbers previously, but they've updated those numbers. And they said that the students, on average, were offered over three, had over three job offers per student. There were job offers all over the place for these.
In every field.
Yeah, across the board for these young people. Quick blurb, we had our board meeting today and got to spend time with both the Coeur d'Alene superintendents. So I got to say goodbye to Stan and hello to the new superintendent. And Mr. Doug Anderson was there today with me and mentioned that the collision repair, which was the new program we brought on, it's full. The AM class is full. So now they're trying to decide if we run a second session, a PM class. So how exciting already that class is filled up. And looking at, we're going to have a mill right program going. And I don't want to say too much, there's an industry partner that's apparently come alongside us, which is, Doug was very excited about, he and Colby both, very encouraging, where they're looking to have an active intern program where they will work it and coordinate it so they're working and going to school and, I mean, really integrate it well. And there's a number of facilities, one of the local companies. So if you have any knowledge of mills and such, a mill right is a very important person and they're a real aging skill set. A lot of those folks are in their 50s and 60s and in the next number of years, it's going to be a lot of retirements and such. So it's a, it's a field ripe for some of the young folks that can acquire those skill sets. And again, and the mill right's almost indispensable to keep those operations running, if you understand all the different things that they do. So that's exciting. So classes are full and there's a couple that were, they've still got a little bit of room, but very exciting and they're just thanking us again for the partnership.
Great. Awesome.
They're good. Yes, sir.
Trustee Howard.
In the past, we've inquired about, you know, the success rate of K-Tech, obviously, and you say it's 99% placement success out of the 388 students. That's really encouraging. What I'd like to know, though, is you indicated that 99% was either military or job or education. And do we have a breakdown of that? I mean, how many of those students are coming on to NIC as opposed to going into the military or having a job? Have we got a handle on any of that?
You know, Ken, those numbers might be available, but I did not get those today, partly because we had two of our board members conferencing in and partly because I was trying to get out of there pretty quick. We actually wrapped up the entire meeting in half an hour. So we weren't really expanding on a lot of stuff very far. So I didn't ask for further breakdown. I might be able to get that, though.
Well, or maybe we could have Doug Anderson or somebody give us that information. It would just be interesting, I think from the time we located our tech center out there, it's been with the expectation that we're going to have some, some people moving over from K-Tech over to the Parker Center. And it'd be nice to get some idea of how many that might be.
You know, I would think that would be helpful to see those three. And then again, as we talk about collision repair and the mill right program, some of the other things, another number that might be useful is how many of those kids are already walking across the parking lot and we're already co-op-ing with, too, because theoretically, that is an add right to us, so.
So that is something Ken's correct, that we, from day one, we've been asking those kind of numbers. And so if they're available, Todd or Rick, whoever, we'd like to have them.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, and I'm looking at Diana back there, but we, so not all of our CTE enrollments that come out of K-Tech would go to Parker. So we have, we forget sometimes that our current technology education programs are throughout our divisions. And I'm looking at Kristy back there, a lot of them are in health occupations. So I'd like to get even a better number than the K-Tech to Parker, but just CTE out of, out of our school districts and we should be able to capture that information.
Very good.
And as I understand it, there are, there are people that will attend K-Tech that will go on to a regular academic curriculum. I mean, and that's a success and they may be here at NIC or whatever. I'd just like to get some sense of what the, what the flow is between the K-Tech program and NIC and NIC's career technical programs.
I don't, you know, I don't think that, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, I don't think that's an unreasonable request because obviously they're trying to track on these students to determine their placement rate. And so they're doing the exit interviews and surveys and the kids are pretty engaged. They're able to get this information pretty good. I think it was one or two years ago, they had one person, one student that just wouldn't respond, but that was clearly the exception. Otherwise, they've been getting pretty good data. So, you know, Ken, this may be all available. I just didn't ask for it.
Sure it is. Trustee Murray.
That information is part of the Carl Perkins grant that the school districts fill out every year. So it's really more generic and it'd be easier for us to work Doug or Cassie direct with Colby to get those numbers and that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
I did have a question on the mill right program. Is that going to be similar to the collision program and be run as a high school program at the Parker Center?
I have to tell you, that's the impression I got, but I think they're still, it's still being refined and so I'm not absolutely clear on that. Doug would have to give a little more information. That was, that was kind of an afterthought because I actually posed the question after we talked about the current status of the collision repair. I said, "Okay, I don't know if we can talk about this or not," but I know, I kind of looked at Doug and Colby and I said, "I know there was a couple of other programs that were kind of on the drawing board that we were thinking about, maybe trying to bring to fruition for the fall of, you know, of 18. Where are we at?" And then Doug kind of threw out the mill right thing and Colby. So I, I didn't glean a lot of information other than that. It looks like something we're going to make happen, but the actual structure of it, I'm not clear on.
Okay.
But we could certainly ask that question, too, while we're at it and get a little more information.
Anything?
And they might even release, I'm sorry, might even release who the corporate partner is and all that. I may be able to say it today, but I just don't know if I'm close to it.
Sure. No, that's appropriate. Any other questions for Todd? Thank you for that report.
You're best.
Okay. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, tab one, approved request for Head Start Facility Improvement Fund. Beth Ann Keller, welcome tonight.
Chair Wood, trustees, guests, and Dr. McLennan, I come forward with a proposal to apply for one-time funding to replace the windows at our Harding Family Center, which is at 411 North 15th in Coeur d'Alene. Interestingly, the Harding Family Center follows the same original footprint of the Sherman Building here on campus and it was built in the 1920s. And that original portion of the building still has its 1920s windows, which are single pane windows that are needing to be replaced. The financial impact would be none to the college, to the, with this one-time funding, the federal government, if this was approved, would hopefully fund our entire $115,000 that this would cost to replace all the windows on three sides of the building, including the office spaces, the meeting rooms, and hallways and courtyard. So this would be being able to prioritize these in case the funding is not available for the entire project. We would fund based on the spaces that are used most by parents and children and then down to staff and then just hallways or courtyards. So it would give them an opportunity to look at that whole overall price and decide what could be funded at this time.
Okay. Seems like a pretty straightforward request. Board, any questions? Trustee Howard.
I've got a question that is probably of Mark, it's a point of order, actually. There's new rules been passed by the legislature on our agendas and we have to advertise an action item if we're going to take action. Does that, when does that take effect, do you know?
July 1.
Okay, so we can, we could pass this on a first reading tonight without being, okay, thank you.
If you make a motion?
Yeah, well, I have a question. I take it that you want to make this application now? You don't want to wait till August for us to have a second reading?
That's correct.
Then I would make a motion to approve the application for the one-time funding to replace the windows at Harding Family Center and make this a second reading.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, be trustee Murray. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, good luck. I hope you get the new windows.
Have a good summer, Beth Ann.
All right, tab two is another action item, appoint our clerk of the election. And my name's next to it, so I am going to tell you that Chris Martin would be the person that we would be appointing. Any questions on this routine appointment? Board?
Other than that, we just expect this typical excellent performance? No, nothing. No pressure.
I like the motion. All the best to the sir. Running for office.
Okay. Trustee Dunlap.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chris Martin as the clerk of the election.
I have a motion by trustee Dunlap. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, be trustee Murray. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Chris. You could go celebrate tonight. Okay, then, tab three, or an action item, is approval of president's contract. This is something that is, comes around every year and I'd ask our college attorney, Mark Lyons, to address it.
Friday night, it's a beer.
Thank you, Chair Wood, member of the board, President McLennan. Consistent with past practice, the president's contract is renewed annually. Contract renewal may be executed by the president and the board chair with the approval and authorization of the board of trustees. The president's contract is a three-year contract. The proposed renewal is to basically roll it forward one year, so that the, covers the fiscal years, July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021. The board may make any adjustments to the contract, but right now, the proposal is that there would be the following adjustments, the same terms, following potential adjustments, one, the renewal for, through 2021. Secondly, to clarify that expense reimbursements for reimbursement for community activities and such, where, may, where appropriate, include expenses for the president's spouse. And again, this is, by the terms of the contract, subject to board review and approval. And finally, and would be any compensation adjustments that the board might consider. So that, that's what's being proposed. The board may, of course, make any other changes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Board, do I have a motion on the approval of the president's contract?
I didn't hear a figure in there.
He said...
I didn't make any changes, so I think the board needs to discuss if there's going to be a change.
But you have a motion first to discuss, though.
And then if the board reaches agreement, then the board would make, somebody would make a motion to approve a renewal of the president's contract with potentially changes to the expense reimbursement for clarification and to any changes to compensation.
Yeah, thank you. So if I have a motion on the president's contract, we can move forward with discussion. Trustee Dunlap.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the president's contract as outlined by attorney Mark Lyons.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
And with a compensation.
Yeah. With, with changes that will be discussed.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right. Discussion?
I just find this a little awkward.
Because I usually do it backwards and you corrected me.
That's all right. I'm going to make a motion that we amend the existing contract to annual compensation of $213,000 and that we modify the contract to provide for the payment of spousal expenses on necessary, on necessary college business.
That's the discussion. Is that a motion, though?
Well, we've got a motion pending.
Right. We had, our motion was pretty open.
That's an amend, that's a motion to amend the motion.
Okay. He'll withdraw.
Make it simple.
All right. Okay, do I have a second to Ken's motion?
I'll second it.
All right.
I'll just wave.
And so then, under further discussion, I just want to, I just want to tell our audience and certainly our president, that we had an opportunity, the board, every year participates in an evaluation of the president and the job performance of the college. And the board is very pleased with the work of Dr. McLennan. We all are very grateful to every initiative that he's brought forward since his employment here. You see it constantly at board meetings, we get, it's wonderful reviews, and then we actually see the work in motion. And we couldn't be happier with our relationship with our president and the relationship he has with all of you and with our community. So we want you to know that. We're very happy with our president. Any other comments? Board? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
The next item is just a discussion item. It's Athletic Expansion Exploration Task Force. And I, I had asked the president to take a look at this. He'd already been doing some of it, some of it was in the works. But we wanted to have, the board wanted to have a greater feel for what it could mean to expand some of our athletic programs, what advantages there would be for current students, potential students, and for the community at large. And so we've asked to have some of that discussion. And maybe, Dr. McLennan, you could go ahead and kick off some of that discussion, what a task force would look like.
So in anticipation of this agenda item, we have been discussing internally how to go about a structured way of looking at, really a review of our athletic program and then what are the demands that are out there. So I would be forming an Athletic Expansion Exploration Task Force. It would be made up, like many of our activities like this, with a broad, appropriate group of people to be a part of that. I have already asked Vice President Graydon Stanley to chair this group and in particular to pay attention to the enrollment impact, the financial impact, and Title IX impact. And let me, let me just stop there for a second, pause there. We've had a group working internally for about six months now, doing a Title IX review of our athletic programs. And it's probably worth a board, as part of a workshop in the future, Title IX has gotten very complicated in terms of how you meet those compliance requirements. We're in good shape with our Title IX, how we address it here at North Idaho College, but... Title IX, how we address it here at North Idaho College. But clearly, if we move into the direction of expanding athletic programs, Title IX is going to be a big feature in that discussion. So there will be a, a major swath of this review around Title IX. And then a fourth component will be student engagement, student experience, and what are our opportunities there. Some of those, we talked about in the planning session earlier, in terms of how do we create the appropriate student engagement activities for students. So, that work will kick off, it'll start to be organized this summer, it'll kick off in the fall. Again, we want faculty participation in that. And that's really about as far as I've thought about it up to this point.
Okay, well, I, I guess just for information purposes, I came on the board in 2004, and at that time, just a year or two prior to that, a few years, the board went through a very painful process with lack of funding, there were some state holdbacks, and it was kind of a crisis time. They had to make some very tough decisions, they had to eliminate athletic programs. One of them was baseball, I feel, I think the other one was, was it track, was it?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna grab some of that in a second.
And, and so, it was a very painful time for the community, and I know why they had to do it. The conferences were much more expensive, we were in a different league. And it, when it comes down to programs versus activities, you have to preserve your programs for your students. So I felt they were, they were in a tough choice mode, but they did what they had to do. Well, today, maybe, we're not in that same crisis mode. We're actually hoping to expand and grow, and offer opportunities to students. So baseball is obviously one of the first things that, that I'd like to see us look at. But there are other opportunities too, and I think the other board members want to talk about that, and what maybe we could ask the president to include in this study with the task force. So, looks like Todd's ready to go. Go ahead, Todd.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. First off, I'd certainly endorse the idea of looking to bring back baseball. I think that would be great, and I know there's some possibilities for local partnerships, depending on facilities and locations and things like that, as we talk to the school districts in the city, and how we would do this. Very excited about that. But I would like to mention a couple other programs. Right behind baseball, one of the first ones I'd like to propose is women's wrestling. I've given each of you a couple of documents, talking a little bit about the financial impact of, of women's wrestling projected, and then a little bit about women's wrestling in the Northwest, talking about how it's a, being wrestled at the NCAA level, it's been sanctioned by the NAIA, it's sanctioned in a number of states. Two of our border states, Oregon and Washington, have their own high school girls' programs, and their own state tournament. There are a number of colleges. If you've noticed, one of the things that we want to do is align with the NWAAC. And what's interesting is, you'll notice there's a number of NWAAC members that have women's wrestling. The women's wrestling could piggyback on the men's very easily. You'll notice there's some of the other junior colleges that are in our, in our wrestling program, the folks down in Oregon in particular. Wouldn't it be that much of a stretch? You've got the folks up in Canada, Simon Fraser's got it. So there's a lot of overlap there. I think it's a natural, you know, as I look at the Title IX, volleyball's kind of on its own, and wrestling's kind of on its own. If we bring back baseball, the roster in baseball will be slightly larger than the roster for softball. But if we were to bring back the, bring, bring, for the first time, excuse me, initiate women's wrestling, I think between women's wrestling, volleyball, and softball, that would be a pretty natural offset to men's wrestling and baseball, if you look at the raw numbers. Baseball's going to have a roster of about 25, where softball's usually closer to 15. So, with volleyball and the women's wrestling, that helps us offset the men's wrestling. And the numbers start to work out pretty good. I mean, even in, even in Aberdeen, at that little community college, you know, I was told there's 40 ladies on their wrestling program. So it's, it's pretty amazing, some of the numbers. And we have a lot of them, like, like right now, we have over 200 kids on campus, because there's a wrestling camp going on right now, and there's going to be two more this summer. At the third one, my understanding is that Sierra Foster, our All-American super wrestler from Post Falls, is going to be helping with the camp. Well, she's going to college down in Oklahoma, because that's where she got recruited. But maybe if we'd had wrestling, she could have stayed right here in our backyard. And I think we look at a lot of kids that would come here from Spokane, and Washington, and even Oregon, as they look for those opportunities for women's wrestling. And there's still a number here in Idaho. So it'd be, and I think that would encourage the state of Idaho. Locally, for the state of Idaho, on the USA Wrestling side, the freestyle side, the, the executive director, the Idaho director for women, is Sarah's mom, Annie Foster, here in Post Falls. So we're very tied into it up here in the north with the women's wrestling. It is an Olympic sport, has been. I don't know if Pat, Pat is here, Pat Wickham, our head coach, I don't know if he'd have anything he'd like to add, but I think there's just a lot of positives, and I don't think it'd be that big of a stretch. And as, as we're talking about upgrades to facilities and gymnasiums potentially, a lot, a lot of those things, I think it could end up being a pretty easy do for the wrestling. Go ahead, I'll do wrestling, I've got a couple of things.
Just a question, wondering locally, within North Idaho, how many female wrestlers do we have in the high schools? And I know they'd be all different grades, but what kind of pool do we have locally?
You know, I don't have a good feel for that now. If you'd asked me a few years ago when my son was wrestling, I'd had a better feel for that, because I saw it. I, I don't know that number now. I know we have some of the gals here in Idaho that are going into the Washington side and doing, I know Sierra did that, I think her junior and senior year, she actually wrestled in the Washington side of the program. So some of them are going across the border for that. So that might even be harder to, to know that number. But that's something we could maybe reach out, maybe Pat might have some contacts, you know, some of the head coaches, maybe he could get a feel for what we're looking at up here in the five northern counties, anyway. Now, having said that, I think baseball and women's wrestling make great sense, and those would be my top two priorities. I would also extend, though, as we talk about the NWAAC, and our participation in the NWAAC, and trying to be engaged with them, and the national rivalry of, of the college, community college over here in Spokane, and stuff like that, it'd be easy to maybe add other sports, like a tennis, where you have men's and women, or cross-country, which we had traditionally, had done very well in, and we had track and field. So, in those sorts of sports, it'd both be a women's and men's, so Title IX wouldn't be an issue, it'd be, you know, there'd be an offset there. But those are a couple of sports that just come to mind, as I think about them, that wouldn't be that difficult with facilities here locally, maybe not right here on campus, but there are a lot of tennis courts around here, and we certainly have a lot of track and field facilities. That those would align us even better with the NWAAC than where we are right now. You know, I was reading in the newspaper, I read both the papers and spokesmen, I read about the championships for the NWAAC, for track and field, and they had tennis, and there may be other sports that I'm missing, but those would be, the next kind of two or three, if you consider cross-country and track and field as separate, I don't know. Those would be like, right behind the other two is, is stuff to look at, you know. But I think we could expand. And, and because of, we're in the NWAAC now, and because of what that means for scholarships and travel and all the rest of that, most of those, and as we've projected, the wrestling, will probably be a net positive cost-wise, because of the additional students that will attract. So, just some thoughts, but baseball's first in my mind, and women's wrestling's right behind it, and then there's a couple other of these that I think would be worthy of consideration.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Dunlap.
Thank you. Todd, thanks for your work on this. And I've got a question, though. On the spreadsheet, it talks about the women's wrestling as being a club sport, as opposed to a varsity sport. And so, is, is the notion that it would eventually progress to a varsity sport, or am I making a distinction that shouldn't be made?
No, that's a good question. You know, ironically, rugby had that same status for years and years and years. And I actually played rugby at the academy. And at that time, although we were sanctioned, we were still technically a club, so we played for championships, but it wasn't technically an NCAA championship. Where now, when they went 15-man, it is, and then with the sevens, it is now also. So there is, that's a legitimate distinction. One of the things about women's wrestling is because the leagues are a little bit klug together, and if you look at the mishmash of the schools that have the program, it's probably, to call it a club would be more accurate. Pat, can you help me on that? Because I don't think right now, there'd be a quote "national championship" for us at the community college level. There might be a regional championship, what can you tell me on that, buddy?
The women's wrestling is a national championship, but the only one that will be sanctioned by is going to be the NAIA in two years. So any other women's wrestling program that competes, competes at the end of the season, and so they could, Southwest Oregon, who's in our, won a national title in women's wrestling, they're not considered above the quota limit. And so that, that's the distinction there, whether it's not, it's not an NCAA sport, it's not an JCAA sport, but NAIA will be the first sanctioned in two years.
So that's why I was hedging that, because the line's kind of blurred there, it's sort of a varsity club team.
Okay.
That might be the best way to describe it. And at the NCAA level, as he's talking about, as Pat, it's an all-comers. And by that, I mean, normally, NCAAs, there's Division I, there's Division II, there's Division III. And even in, in the Division III, there can be two levels, and same with Division I, depending on the sport. When they do the women's, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but all the divisions are all together.
Yes.
They all come together as one championship.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Howard.
You know, I support the concept of studying the viability of expansion of athletic programs. I'm of the personal persuasion that athletics is a real important learning process for young people. It's a character-building process. It, it contains, in the coaching and the performance, all kinds of virtues that, that young people get a chance to exercise, that are good in developing good citizenship qualities. And so I think the idea of expanding those programs is a good idea. However, I think that the more students that we can get involved, and what we can afford, is all part of the analysis. And so, I would, I would encourage the administration, as they look, to look at factors like getting as many students as in a program involved as possible, and what the costs are going to be for travel and for the competition, and those sort of things, so that we don't build up one sport that's so expensive that we can't have three sports that, that include a lot more students. That this, this process that we're going through now is one of trying to develop an environment for the development of character of young people, and I think we ought to try and do that for as many as possible.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
You know, that dovetails nicely with what we talked about earlier at the workshop, actually, about athletics being one of the things that helps be some glue for people, and a source of pride, and kind of an extension of the local high schools, is what we were talking about.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, trustee Howard. So the approach that, you know, as I was thinking through this, and it occurred to me that the, the way I would approach this is really through an enrollment management approach. And how are we going to, again, it goes back to the value proposition that we were talking about earlier this evening. These program, it could be women's wrestling, and it could be baseball. The Title IX considerations are not as linear as men's baseball, the women's softball. It's really total count, it's, it's club versus, you know, NWAAC. There's all kinds of, and it's participation of athletes, not just the sports themselves. So the actual head count of, of student athletes who are participating in a sport, not just the fact that two sports in each gender exist, it's so, it does get, it gets very complicated. But there are, and Al couldn't be here this evening, I know he would add a lot to this conversation, but there's a number of other opportunities that we think could attract appropriately more students within our region to have an athletic experience that would all, and not only add value to the, to the college, their college experience, but also would add enrollment capacity for us, and in many cases, could become financially viable, not as a, as actually a revenue process, because these are students who are paying tuition, they're staying in our residence halls, they're contributing in other ways as well. So I actually have a model of, of a, sort of a way to go through, looking at this on the financial side of it, but then also on the enrollment management side of it as well. So all of these things, and this, and your input is going to be obviously key to this, because, you know, depending on the programs we pursue, and what kind of a conference we're talking about, to your point, you may be doing something at the exclusion of a broader opportunity to serve more students that way, and, and help with the enrollment piece of that as well. So those are all things that are going to be a part of this process.
So there's one more aspect to that I'd like you to look into, and that would be the community. I'd like to know from the booster clubs and from the students, where their interest lies. I mean, I want to bring back baseball, but maybe, maybe that's not a lot of interest out there. So I wouldn't want to leave out the stakeholders. Aside from the fiscal look and the enrollment look, let's talk to the stakeholders, if we could. And I, board, I would like to just suggest that the president goes off and, and however he pulls this task force together, it's fine for me. If he needs to, to pay someone a small stipend to help with some of the research, I think that we should just encourage it to get done. I know that there's a lot of, we have our people on campus engaged in a lot of things right now, so we can't expect them to do everything at once. So I would, me personally, I would be fine if he had to get a little bit of help with that, doesn't have to be much money. So, all right, that was our discussion item, and that takes us on to the board chair report. I asked John Mueller to give you some photographs of, artist renderings of what the grandstands would look like. As you know, we contributed to the grandstand remodel that's going to be taking place. And with that understanding, there will be a women's locker room and a men's visiting locker room. And I know our own Don Don is engaged in this committee on what the design will look like. I wanted you to have the artist's rendering, because I think it looks so nice. John Mueller and his partner, I think it's Steve, I can't think of his last name at the moment, Steve Roth, nice guy, they're willing to come and give you a full presentation, like they did to Park and Rec the other night, about the entire grandstands and, and what it will look like. And one of the issues that we asked for was that we would have a cardinal on this building. And in the grandstand, you see a flag. And so, in the Park and Rec meeting, I suggested very strongly that we'd sure like to see a cardinal somewhere on the building, and maybe on the, the home locker room door, because of our contribution to this, and because we will, our women's team will use this a lot. So they assured me that they would work on that, and we'll keep encouraging them. But if you have any questions about this, I just thought it would be a nice visual for you all to have. Trustee Howard.
I would suggest that there'd be a two-tone building with cardinal red on the bottom and green on the top.
[laughing]
Or vice versa, I don't care.
I don't know, the historical committee will go for that, but we can sure let them know that's what you want. They did a wonderful job of trying to capture the grandstand in its glory days, but bringing it up to modern use. So, there you have it. And really, we don't have a lot going on. We will not meet again in July, too many conflicts, the board usually doesn't meet in July. So we will meet again in August, and so I hope all of you have a wonderful summer, a great Fourth of July. And, president's not off the hook, he has to work all of July. And so, yes, you had a comment.
I just want to make sure, I, I think you have this in your package as well, and just want to point out the August 13 reception at, at our home.
Yes, look forward to that.
You can all make it.
Yep.
Great. Any remarks for the good of the order?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Banducci.
I actually have two. One was, had the privilege of seeing the raffle house Monday evening. My wife and I got to tour that. And I have to commend our carpentry folks. Once again, they've done an outstanding job. It's a beautiful house. Couple things in particular, I'm a guy, so I'm big on garages. It's oversized three-car garage with storage, it's a great garage. Master bath was particularly nice, some of the tile work in there impressed my wife. And the showerheads were high for a tall guy. Anyway, overall, my impression was, it was excellent. And got to meet one of the vendors, the folks that provided the quartz, a very nice young man, and some, some beautiful quartz in there for the countertops. So, people were generous, and they did a great job. And the house, I don't know where we are with raffle tickets, but if we're not sold out, you better get it right now.
200 left, we better get busy.
No, as of this morning, 100 left. 100 left, so...
They usually go quick right about now.
If you want to get it, it's worth your, it's worth it. It's a beautiful house, it's a nice location on a corner lot. So anyway, just want to tout that, it was a lovely evening. And one more thing, this is a sidebar, I'm 55 today, this is how I'm spending my birthday. So, but, if you want to join me for a beer or a wine Friday night at my son's place, Bulldog Pipe and Cigar, in Silver Lake Mall, we're going to have Domino's Pizza, and we'll have some desserts, and come join me for a beer.
Well, Todd, we had no idea. Double nickel, huh?
So this Friday, this Friday, I'm the, I'm the double nickel tonight, but Friday's the celebration. It's going to be free food, free goodies, so come, come, tip a...
Should we ask Mark to lead in song?
Oh.
[laughing]
So anyway, invitations extend to everybody, come join us for a stop-by if you want, or come hang out for a while.
All right, happy birthday, Todd.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I will close. Motion adjourned.
Six fifteen.
That's a record.